Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Kenyatta Johnson, Council President, also representing the 2nd Council Semitic District, which covers the areas of South Philadelphia, Southwest Philadelphia, and parts of Center City. It's truly an honor and a privilege to be here this evening in partnership with my colleague who represents the east side of Broad Street here in South Philadelphia, Councilmember Mark Squiller. I'm also joined by Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke, Councilmember Ketty Lizada, Councilmember Cindy Bass, Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young, Councilmember Jim Harity, Councilmember Isaiah Thomas, and Councilmember Anthony Phillips. And I want to personally just thank them for taking time out of their schedule to join us this evening as we kick off our Neighborhood Budget Town Hall meetings. As a, as Council President, I've always made it my mission and my commitment to make sure that this new generation of council members are out and about in the community, bringing the information and the resources out and about to the people, making sure, most importantly, as council members, as a body and as a unit, we're supporting one another across this great city of Philadelphia, but most importantly, being out in the streets, touching and talking to members of our community. And so that's what this evening is all about. It's all about you, to get an update on our, on our current budgetary process, listen to your issues and your concerns as we craft and shape a budget that's fiscally sound, but most importantly, equitable for all of the residents and stakeholders here in the city of Philadelphia. For me, it's also, feels good anytime I have the opportunity to come home in South Philadelphia to do the, do an event. And so I thank all my colleagues for joining us this evening. It's very, very nice outside, and so I think most folks probably enjoy being outside, enjoying this weather as opposed to being here. So we do think all of you are here, and we look forward to a very, very robust and informative dialogue. I'm going to turn the microphone over to the councilman from the 1st Council Semitic District that actually represents South Philadelphia High School. This is the school that my mom attended, and so I went to BAC when they say B-O-K. But I also support Southern High School, which is known as also South Philadelphia High School. Councilman Mark Squiller.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson, Council President Johnson, and thank you to our colleagues. As we see, we have a form here for a Neighborhood Budget Hearing, which is very impressive. Tells you how important it is to hear from the community, hear the interest and concerns of the budget, not only in South Philadelphia, but throughout the city of Philadelphia. And it's an honor to, to be here at South Philly High to do that. South Philly High is one of those schools that is an icon of the city of Philadelphia. It is a school that even when BAC closed was willing to work with the city to make sure that we have trades and other opportunities for young folks to see the available options for not only going to secondary education, but getting the training necessary to join apprenticeship in, in the trades. So it's also in person. I also like to thank the administration folks who, who came out today, and I, I do see some. I see Public Property, Joe Braski from Public Property here. Very impressive to, to see that, so thank you for that. And hopefully, we could answer as many questions as you have today. If not, we will get those questions answered and get back to you with the, the information that is being requested. So thank you so much, and looking forward to having the conversation.
Thank you, Mark. And also, I want to ask for Assistant Principal Joe Tabasco to just take the podium and give you a formal welcome to South Philadelphia High School.
Hello, City Council Members, City Council Staff, and South Philadelphia constituents. We want to wish everyone a happy Eid for all those who celebrate. As the proud Assistant Principal of South Philadelphia High School, we are honored to host the City Council in the Community Budget Town Hall Meeting. Just as the City Council and the Mayor's Office have seen change over the past year, South Philadelphia High School has undergone a tremendous transformation recently. We are committed to being the premier community school in the city of Philadelphia, and with that commitment brings the desire to support, nurture, and care for our students in every sense of the word, support, nurture, and care. As a community school, we work actively with over seventy-five partners to provide the resources our scholars need to succeed, including food when hungry, shelter when unhoused, clothes when undressed, and treatment when ill. And with close to a hundred different Tier One school-wide events promoting cultural awareness, growth mindset, and self-advocacy, no two weeks at South Philadelphia High School are ever truly the same. With our full heart, South Philadelphia High School is an institution built on the belief that no barrier is too great to overcome, and that every child can, should, and will get the excellent education they deserve. The commitment to education of every child has brought extraordinary results in both our climate and academic data. At South Philadelphia High School, we believe it is a moral obligation to teach our children how to resolve conflict in a meaningful and realistic manner. With our scholars entering neighborhoods where young people have lost their lives due to gun violence, we remain steadfast that the tools we teach our students to de-escalate and resolve conflict matter greatly. We practice restorative justice through our Relationships First approach, and in this effort, over the past two years, we have seen a sixty percent reduction in the number of suspensions assigned to students and a significant decrease in the number of serious incidents involving our students. This change in climate and culture has paved the way for exponential growth in our academic success. We have seen an eleven percent increase in proficiency in both our biology and English Keystone scores. We have seen a nine percent increase in the number of students attending ninety percent a day, and close to ninety percent of our career in technical education students graduate passing with industry-based certifications. And just recently, we have had an unprecedented five staff members win the Lindback Award for Excellence in Education, including our own Principal Check Taylor. We ask you, if you're interested in learning more about, hearing more about our wonderful school we have here on Broad Street, you could contact us via the information provided on our website. Again, thank you, City Council, for holding your community event here and providing us just a small opportunity to share the excellence exhibited every day at South Philly High.
Thank you, Assistant Principal Joe Tabasco. And so we're going to get right down to the agenda. First, there's going to be an overview of our, of our current city budget by Chief Financial Officer Helen Lawhead, and then we will open it up, and we already have significant amount of individuals are already signed up to ask us questions, and so we'll delve right into the Q and A. And so with that being said, I want to also acknowledge, arriving is City Commissioner Omar Sabir. I want to thank him also for being here as well. And so with that being said, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Chief Financial Officer Helen Lawhead.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. My name is Helen Lawhead. I am the Chief Financial Officer for City Council. I'm going to take the next five, ten minutes to walk through a brief presentation going over what the current budget proposal is, both for the operating, operating and the capital budget, and we'll talk a little bit more about what that entails. So first, what is a city budget? So the budget is an annual plan with a price tag for the city of Philadelphia's programs and services, and those yearly decisions around how the city spends resources can impact the quality of life of businesses, residents, and visitors. One important note is that the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter requires that the city to produce a balanced budget. That means our revenues have to fully cover our spending, so we can't spend more than what we have from our revenues, which we generate from our local taxes, fines, and fees. So first, we want to talk about how the city divides its budget. So the city divides its budget. We'll just pause for a second here. So I think in the meantime, so at the front, hopefully, everyone was able to grab a printed-out version. If not, I'll just continue to read through aloud, if that's okay, while we're continuing to do some tech work here. Thank you.
Can we ask somebody about a printout version?
Yes, and if anyone would like a printout version, you could raise your hand, and we have Stefan in the back who can bring some copies around to folks as well. Thank you, Councilmember. Okay, so first, I just want to talk a little bit about how the city divides its budget. So when we talk about our budget, we usually say operating and capital budget. And the operating budget is how we fund our day-to-day services, like trash collection, payroll for our city employees, and among other things, like our paper to send out our water bills. And so that's all budgeted in our operating budget. Our capital budget is a little bit different, and that is where we budget for our long-term infrastructure investments. And those are things like our recreation centers, our larger vehicles, like fire engines, and that budget is really used, again, for those long-term infrastructure investments that are, that are going to be used over a long period of time and usually cost a lot more to do. So as we talk about this year's budget, I'm going to go over a few highlights that are in this budget proposal. So the plan proposes a significant investment of $2 billion over, over five years. That's a lot of money. And so that includes eight-hundred-and-fifty million in operating investments and one-point-four billion in capital investments. And these all have a focus on enhancing public safety, clean and green initiatives, economic opportunity, housing, education, and core support functions, which are really some of those backend government functions. The current budget proposal keeps taxes flat, so that means there's no tax increases or cuts in this proposal. Okay, so we are going to go a little bit more into the operating budget, which again funds those day-to-day services. And so the FY twenty-five, and what that means is our fiscal year, which goes from July first to June thirtieth of next year, it will include six-point-two billion in revenues, and that is what we collect from our local taxes, our local fines and fees as well. And it includes six-point-two-nine billion in expenditures. And as you can see here from the chart, there's around a hundred-and-forty-three million dollars in new investments that are included in this year's budget proposal. And we have some categories broken down here of the different categories of spending. And this year, the largest portions are those clean and green initiatives and public safety, and we'll go in a little bit more detail on those. For our capital budget, the fiscal year twenty-five capital budget is proposing six-point-zero-eight billion in spending with two-hundred-and-ninety-six million in new investments for this upcoming year. The largest portion of that is going towards public safety investments with a hundred-and-forty-six million, that's nearly fifty percent of next year's budget. And so some of the highlights for this upcoming five-year plan, which covers five years, is our public safety, around six-hundred-million-dollar investment there, five-hundred-million in street paving, a hundred-and-fifty-two million for parks and rec facilities, significant investment in the PHL Taking Care of Business Initiative, additional school district support, so over five years, there'll be an increase of a hundred-and-twenty-nine million dollars in support to the school district. Also, a proposal for an increase in what the city contributes to SEPTA, so a hundred-and-seventeen million dollar increase, as well as a proposal for triage and wellness facilities. So those are some of the really large investments that are in the proposal. We're not going to go through all of these. You have them all in the PowerPoint, but I thought this would be a good way to show some examples of what investments are in each category of spending. So when we talk about clean and green initiatives, some examples of increased spending for the upcoming budget year is eighteen million for an investment to roll out a new citywide residential cleaning program with dedicated cleaning crews for every district. Again, a hundred-and-thirty million to expand the PHL Taking Care of Business program that supports commercial corridors. Other investments are six-point-seven million for a complete renovation of the Northwest Transfer Station. So those are some examples of the clean and green initiatives in this year's budget proposal. Some examples of the public safety investments include thirteen million for improvements to fire facilities, forty-five million for a new forensic lab, as well as some other investments in infrastructure in our public safety facilities. Examples of some housing investments include a proposal for thirty thousand units of housing, increased investments in some of our home programs, like the Basic Systems Repair Program, Turn the Key, and Restore, Repair, and Renew. And then some investments, examples of investments in our education is, again, a hundred-and-nineteen million increased support to the school district, ten million to the Community College of Philadelphia for continued support for their scholarship program, forty-six million for renovations to the city's libraries, so some large investments there. And finally, we have some examples of economic opportunity investments, which include thirteen-point-eight million for PHL Open for Business process. This will improve the process that businesses go through when working in the city. Again, some increased support for some corridor cleaning, as well as two million for support, to support capital access for diverse businesses. And then we also have some investments for our core support programs, like our fleet services, which helps maintain some of the city's vehicles, like our police radio cars, our fire trucks, and then a million, ten million dollar increase for some of the safe, safety spaces in our government buildings. All right, so now to the, the fun part. We want to hear from you all, so I'm going to turn it back over to the Council President.
Thank you very much, Helen, and now is the opportunity for members of the community to give your recommendations. You may have questions, you may have issues, you may have concerns regarding the upcoming budget process. And this, so everyone will know, what you just heard is actually a proposed budget by the Mayor, NSC of Philadelphia, and us being members of the council, we will also provide our proposals and our recommendations to the mayor's administration, and we'll negotiate what the final budget process looks like. And so part of what we're doing this here, this evening, is making sure we're here from our constituents as we go through that, that process, and not make decisions just based upon our own intuition. And so with that being said, the first person we want to ask to come on up is Edward Hansen. Good evening, Edward.
Yeah, I'll hold up further away. Does it need to be in the form of question, or can I just go through my, my thing? All right. Yeah, so as an educator with the public school district, I find this proposal leaves a great deal to be desired. I know Mayor Parker has said a lot of nice things about like crumbs and full loafs and, you know, building and rebuilding, but I don't hear a lot of hard, real answers to anything, and it's just odd to me because she seems to be able to say a hundred drones for the cops and two hundred cars for the police, which, you know, but then she wants to talk about year-round, it's like she can't even say, let's maybe get air conditioning in fifty, you know, the fifty-seven percent of our buildings that don't have it. Yeah, I mean, in February of twenty-twenty-three, the PA State Court found that Pennsylvania schools are unconstitutionally underfunded. And in the text of that ruling, Mr. Monson, the former CFO of the School District of Philadelphia, was quoted saying, "We spend almost the least in the state despite having the highest need in our state." The state promised around three-hundred million in school funding as a result of that ruling, but the mayor can't even match that. She'd rather give three-hundred million to prisons, and then additionally, a hefty eight-hundred-seventy-seven million to the police, which tells me that this administration would rather prioritize incarceration over education. If this administration really wants to be tough on crime, statistically, you should be investing in education, not policing. In twenty-twenty-two, the National Bureau of Economic Research stated that, "While many policies focus on the crime-detering effects of additional policing or tougher crime-justice sanctions, our findings highlight that early investments in children's lives can prevent contact with the adult criminal justice system. Specifically, our results show that improving public schools can keep children on a path of increased school engagement and completion, thereby lowering their criminal propensity in adulthood." And their working, that was stated in their working paper, "School, Public School Funding, School Quality, and Adult Crime." Yeah, get that game. They then go on to say, "Their results show that increases in school funding can indeed bring positive benefits to society through reductions in criminal activity, and that investing in social programs may have benefits that extend beyond their intended purpose and recipients." Those benefits come in the form of higher participation in the workforce and, which then translates to additional tax revenue, which I assume you guys would find to be pretty incentivizing, while simultaneously lowering the crime rate. In fact, a twenty-thirteen study released by Alliance for Excellent Education titled "Saving Futures, Saving Dollars: The Impact of Education on Crime Reduction and Earnings" estimates that if we could increase our male graduation rate by five percent in Pennsylvania, we would save seven-hundred-thirty-seven million dollars in crime-related spending while also earning an additional forty-eight million in tax revenue, proving, you know, providing a total economic benefit of seven-hundred-eighty-five million dollars. Essentially, investing in further education pays for itself, both socially and monetarily, is what these are saying, while investing in policing statistically fails to provide any material gain, making it a waste of taxpayer dollars. In twenty-sixteen article, in a twenty-sixteen article published by Journal of Experimental Criminology, under the title "Conclusions from the History of Research into the Effects of Police Size," on crime nineteen-sixty-eight through two-thousand-and-thirteen, a historical systemic review stated that its findings vary considerably over time, however, compared to research standards and in comparison to effect sizes calculated for police practices and other meta-analyses, the overall effect size for police force size on crime is negative, small, and not statistically significant. It then concludes, "This line of research has exhausted its utility, changing police strategy is likely to have a greater impact on crime than adding more police."
Thank you, Mr. Hansen.
Well, I got a little bit more, real quick. So as it stands now, the only thing this budget seems intent on providing children of this city is a pipeline to prison. It is the product of a harmful and ineffective approach to crime prevention that has historically cost many children's futures and, in its most tragic cases, their lives. Yeah, I just, you know, me personally, I just don't see, I, I mean, based off of all that information, right? It seems like this budget is actually not tough on crime at all. It's actually pro-crime. So I would just love to hear how you guys can justify putting any money towards law enforcement and not at, even matching the prison budget with your school budget. Like, that doesn't make any sense to me.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your input. And then any member of council may want to chime in at any point in time. As constituents come up, feel free. Just want to say that as well. The chair recognizes Councilmember Jay Young.
Thank you so much for that. Just for the record, I think the mayor's proposed budget for the police is nine-hundred-and-forty million, so just to let folks know.
Council President.
It's about nine-hundred-and-forty million, the mayor's proposed budget for the police.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
Thank you, Council President. I, I'm not going to offer too much information. I just want to say a couple of things. Number one, as the Chair of Education Committee, I definitely appreciate that testimony, and I appreciate our principal, our teachers, and all of our school staff who are here today to be a part of the conversation, but more importantly, I appreciate the work that you do with our children on a consistent basis, so thank you. One thing I will say, because when you talk about the school district budget, from an operating perspective, the school district actually has a surplus right now. City Council, along with previous administration, has put more money into the school district than, than anybody has ever seen in the history of the city of Philadelphia. We do have the federal government to thank for that, but on a local level, we've put up more money for the school district than what we've ever seen. I think the issue that we have, and where we see some discrepancy, is around facilities. So on the operating side, there is money to hire staff and do things like that, and we would like to see more, right? We definitely would like to see more, but right now, we have a six-billion-plus-dollar deficit as it relates to our facilities, and that's the big concern that a lot of people have as it relates to the education space. The governor has made it very clear that he's not going to give capital dollars, thank you for the great explanation, as it relates to the difference between capital and operating. The governor has made it clear that he's not going to give us capital dollars for school buildings until we have a plan. So in his budget, he proposed about a hundred million new dollars in capital for the entire Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, but unfortunately, when you break that down, that's not even enough for Philadelphia to fix Frankfurt High School, let alone South Philly High School and some of the other issues that we're facing. So with the six-billion-dollar-plus deficit that we have as a city, the teacher who spoke is absolutely correct in a sense that, whereas though we need a lot more revenue to be able to address this deficit, the key is, is that we have to be able to communicate to all sectors of government what our plan is. Nobody's going to give us a blank check for the school district of Philadelphia, so they want to see what we plan to do as far as these old buildings and how we plan to get it done. Thank you, Council President, thank you, colleagues.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions from members of the panel? The chair recognizes Councilmember Ketty Lizada.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you so much for your testimony. I, I would just share that you all will hear often...
Just a little close. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. You will often hear that council people, district council people like myself, have always supported and have asked for more enforcement in districts like mine, who are faced with being the epicenter of where a lot of criminal activity happens and where the, the epicenter of the opiate crisis exists. My schools are amongst the lowest-performing schools, mostly because of what Councilmember Isaiah just mentioned, but also because I can't get teachers to, to come to school because they fear for their safety. I can't get parents to send their children to school because sometimes going to and from school, there is a safety issue. And so you will always hear me support and call for more enforcement as a result of what is happening in that environment. And so I am a firm believer that we need to give our children a fair, a more fair academic experience and a more fair and more equal academic opportunity, but in districts like mine, I need both. I need, I need enforcement, and I need education opportunities that are equal to other, or as equal in other communities because of what we are experiencing.
Thank you, member. Next, we're going to call up for Jesse Amadio.
Okay, great. Thank you, councilmembers and Council President, for the opportunity to speak today. I'd like to thank City Council for passing the Traffic Calming for School Bill and extending it recently to senior housing, recreation centers, playgrounds, parks, and libraries. While the bill automatically approves those locations for traffic calming measures, it doesn't stipulate any sort of money to fund these particular improvements. And so the last year, fifty schools got speed bumps. I believe fifty more are on the list for this year, but there are over two-hundred schools in our district and hundreds more community locations that would benefit from these safety improvements. The city reports that five children are hit by vehicles while walking in Philadelphia a week. And while I commend the city for prioritizing the fifty schools that have the highest accident reports, every one of these locations should be immediately fitted with safe crossings so kids aren't getting hit by vehicles when they're going to the playground, and not delayed for years due to limited budgetary, budgetary limitations. So I'm asking today, will City Council be able to include additional funds to install traffic calming measures at all eligible, eligible locations within a timely fashion?
I know who's going to answer that. The chair recognizes Councilmember Anthony Phillips.
Thank you. Thank you all. So I'm the author of the first bill, which helped make it easier for the Trees Department to install speed cushions in front of every school in the city of Philadelphia. Subsequently, Councilwoman Bass introduced something around senior centers, and then Councilwoman Lizada did libraries and rec centers, so just... So just started a chain reaction. We all teamed up to really make sure that in some of our most vulnerable places, we install speed calming measures immediately without any bureaucracy. So cheers to us on doing that. But you're right, we are, we have asked, including Lazada today, I think Councilwoman Bass as well, we've all asked recently, and Gadi, who's not here today, how can we speed up the process to install the speed cushions in front of libraries, rec centers and schools? Their answer is that they are, they are still working on a timeline, but with our schools, they're looking maybe to do something probably within the next, this year, they're trying to do, I think about another 30 schools, and then next year, they're trying to finish up by next year with all of the schools. Let's see how far they go. In terms of the rec centers and the libraries, they have not gotten to that point yet, but they're looking to give us a plan of what that looks like. We are asking for more funding to speed that process up, but also just so folks know, we have a, the installation only can be done pretty much in like the spring, summer and fall, because during winter months, they don't really have the ability to install because it has to be other, over 40-degree amount of weather. So, yes, your voice will be heard on this because we are very concerned at this, at this, this is a very popular thing right now in the city of Philadelphia because traffic is crazy. So all of us, for the most part, are very concerned about this and we do want to see ways to speed this up as possible. So I'm glad you pushed us on this tonight. Thank you.
I'm Councilmember Mark Squiller, the First District, too, and Councilmember Phillips is absolutely right. And the issue comes, the capacity, what is the capacity to do to work? There are, we were talking about 130 miles a year and repaving streets and doing that. The problem comes in is the city needs to increase the number of crews that could do this work and then also look at contracting out work so that we could build the capacity to get these done quicker. So the resources is one thing, but also the capacity is the other, and we need to work with the Streets Department and the administration to build up that capacity so that we could get the safety measures put into the streets as quick as possible.
The chair recognizes also the presence of Council Nina Ma at large, member. Any other comments from members of the committee? Okay, hearing none. Next, I'm going to ask from Ms. Dita White to please come on up. 36th Ward Committee Woman.
36th Ward Committee. Hi, councilmembers. Thank you for listening to me and giving me this opportunity. I was not prepared for this tonight, but being a community person and a committee person for the last 24 years, the 36th Third Ward, a block captain for the last 25 years, a retiree from the school district of special ed, and just being able to work with the children in my community, that is my main concern and the corridor of the Point Breeze community. I'm seeing now that a lot of our stores have closed and a lot of residential is coming in and being a constituent and a community person, living in that community for the last 50-something years. I would love to see more businesses coming back into the community, maybe farmers' markers and Quality of Life Greenery Gardens going on. As I said, I wasn't really prepared tonight, but that is on my mind, that is what I need, I would love to see in our community. And I'm just hoping that when our Family Dollar closes, which is about to close, as we hear that our Rite-Aids are closing, instead of residential, that we get more small businesses and more businesses back into the community, whether it are Whole Foods and Greenery. Also, being a retiree from the school district, I like the comment of this young man that came up before, had a need, more air conditioning put back into the schools and not being a product of college, but I'm in college now, so it's never too late, but I am a BAC alumni and my gift was come from vocation. I learned how to tailor and I thought I'd be a top retiree, but most of the factories moved down south or either out of the country. So I would love to see that come back into the city also. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Just a couple of small things. Under the mayor's proposal, she's investing heavily on clean and green. Part of that process is under her Taking Care of Business Initiative, there will be 11 new positions to expand corridor cleaning, and also she's investing additional $2 million for capital assistance. That's basically loans for diverse businesses. And so hopefully, as we move forward, that can be part of that conversation in terms of the actual corridor. And we also are having conversations regarding the strategizing to see what type of new store that can place the Family Dollar that decided to actually leave. So in the event that the developer decides to build, well, he's taking consideration on keeping commercial, right, on the front, on keeping commercial on the, on the bottom level, right? But also work with the neighbors in the community in terms of what type of actual commercial business go inside that actual facility. And so, thank you for that information in terms of comments and then we'll keep you abreast as we move forward.
Council President.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Nina Ma.
Hi. Thank you so much for having us here today. I wanted to just address the young lady who is someone who said that she...
Can you speak into the mic?
That she was, was used to sew or was a tailor, because, you know, one of the things we have to look at, both Nicholas O'Rourke, Councilmember O'Rourke and myself, we're on the Global Opportunities and Innovative Economy Council Committee. He's the Chair and the Vice Chair. We're looking at things like, we used to be a place, a center for textiles. We used to be a place for garment industry here. That's all gone, but that doesn't mean it can't come back. So I would love to get your name and follow up with our Commerce Department to really just brainstorm around, you know, what we can do in that area, because what has happened in Philadelphia, that a lot of designers did not have a place to do their work, to do their displays for the, before they actually got a contract. Those spaces have gone. So, but that doesn't mean they're gone forever. Let's clean and green and then bring back some stuff. So I'd love to catch up with you after we talk to get your ideas around this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of City Council? I thought Dita was going to talk about all them children that she worked with inside the neighborhood, and so we do thank you for the work that you do keeping our young people safe. Next person up we have is Ms. Annette Randolph, Mr. Dennis Randolph, South Philadelphia. Keep me in check, too. You ain't about no council president. You better address my issues. It's my neighbor, Ms. Randolph Block Captain.
Hello to everyone.
Hello, Ms. Randolph.
Hello. Well, first of all, I want to thank you all for having this meeting. I didn't know really what this meeting was all about. I came here really because my interest and my focus has always been about the children. And what I don't see is skating rinks, bowling alleys, penny arcades. All I see is buildings going up, dogs going everywhere, et cetera. This is what I see. I am a product of the Philadelphia schools. My grandchildren are here and I'm interested in education for my grandchildren, but what I don't like is lottery. Lottery to me is gambling. I don't think education should be a gamble. I think our children should be able to go to a school of a choice of the parents, not by picking out numbers or whatever, however that they do that lottery. Why are we gambling with our children's education? Why do they have to have certain, whatever, however that they do? I'm against that. I'm against that. But mainly, I would like to see our children have somewheres to go in our neighborhoods. We talk about the guns, we talk about the violence, you know, but our children, they need to have somewhere besides these outside basketball courts like that. And it's good, don't get me wrong, but what about the things that we used to have? We don't have those things anymore. I see more housing going up than anything in the world. Now, don't get me wrong, my blessed husband back here served 20 years in the military. I was a community mayor and we have traveled around the world and we've seen places and we never know how those places got to be the way that they are. But now what I see here in Philadelphia, and I've been here for years, in fact, I am the fourth generation into the home that I am in now with the same telephone number that my great-grandmother has. I still have that number, PentaPakka55814, okay? I still have it. Was blessed to get it back because I told the history of that number. That's how I got it back. But nevertheless, so this is what I was thinking about, but when I looked at this agenda and I looked at this real quick, and I'm not going to be long, I think public safety should be number one. I think clean and green should be number two. I think education, the way that you have it, should be number three. I think number, economic opportunities should be number four. And I think core support should be number five. And housing should be number six. That's the way that I look at it. And I thank my, Mr. Kenyatta Councilman, Kenyatta Johnson, I thank you for all that you do. Yes, I do. You know, I just let them know, I'm straight. I'm, I'm straight. I don't bite my tongue. You know, I don't bite my tongue. And, and I was a part of the Washington Avenue. I want to let y'all know. And I want to let y'all know about this Washington Avenue change. I'm glad that it stayed the same because I get up every morning and I work at the VA and that the way that those trucks and those cars are going, we need what we need. What I don't like, Mr. Squiller, is that the way you changed Washington Avenue going up is horrible, and I'm just going to keep it real with you, because people can't get by. There was a bad accident the other day on Washington Avenue and those speed bumps, those speed bumps, yes, they are needed, but the traffic flies over those speed bumps like it ain't nothing. Where that accident was at the other day was a speed bump, okay? And all those little yellow poles and things that's going, that's down, they hitting them and they starting to be dominos. That's all I'm going to say. I'm just keeping it real. So y'all should come out early in the morning and look at the traffic. Get up in the morning like I do to go to work. Come on down Washington Avenue and check it out and see what's there. Get up in the mornings and check the city out so you can see what's going on. Not eight o'clock, six o'clock, five o'clock, and you'll see all of the traffic. But number one is the children, education. Thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Any questions, comments from members of the committee? Councilmember Anthony Phillips.
I just want to say thank you so much for your commentary. I definitely have duly noted the priorities that you have just mentioned and I'm, you know, I work alongside as the Vice Chair of Education with Isaiah Thomas, who's the Chair, and so totally with you on that. I'm also curious to learn more from you all, if you can, you know, your thoughts over the, on the school board over the past some odd years, too, right? If you have any perspective on that, right? Those things are really important for us as we go into thoughts and deliberations around that issue as well.
Council President, can I just?
Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
I just want to also just let you know that I appreciate your comments and what I want to do is just offer some resources through the Council President's office as it relates to free programming for young people. I, I 100% agree with you and the teacher who testified earlier that the best way to offset some of the crime issues that we're seeing is to give young people something to do, you know? While I can't unilaterally decide how everything is spent, that's why we're a legislative group, I have taken the initiative and done some things myself between my free camp that I do every summer, as well as a big game and a festival that we're putting together this year, and a few other initiatives that my office works with other members of council on to make sure that in our own way and through our own resources outside of, you know, the things that we're discussing today, we try to make sure young people stay busy. So I will be sure to get those things to the Council President for you and for everybody else that's here. And as you get young people who do need those opportunities to be mentored and be a part of some type of positive out-of-school-time-based initiative, we want to be as supportive as possible. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. And I just have one small part. And we were with the mayor yesterday, members of council, as she kicked off her summer enrichment initiative for people to know about the programs that are available, for people to get involved in. I think, and when I know, when we have different meetings, people say there's nothing for our children to do, but I'm one that always beg to differ. Here's why. One, we have a brand-new state-of-the-art under-rebuild recreation center called Veer Recreation Center, built from the ground up, sports turf field, brand-new basketball courts, brand-new playground equipment for the children. Then right across the street, we have Smith Playground, fairly new turf field, but, but separate from that, it's the programming that takes place. Now, I'm a dad, I'm raising two young boys, still in the neighborhood where I grew up at. My children attend the minorx soccer and football team. They also attend Wharton Square Park, Parks and Recreation Free Tennis Program. You also have every Saturday, free basketball program at Marion Anderson Recreation Center. Where I think we fail at, that we have to do a better job at is, how do we get the information out? Like, we should have a social media app that every parent, every young person in the city of Philadelphia should have, so they can just go on their phone and scroll down and find out where the programs at for us to get involved in. And so my mission, and I just reached out to the mayor yesterday, I said, "The press conference was great, all these great programming, and let's create an app so we can address how people get information from a social media standpoint so they'll know what's available that's out there to them." And I think the onus is on us as leaders to get as much information out there possible to their parents and also the young people to keep them involved in things that are positive, even shoe playground, free summer camp, free summer camp at Marion Anderson, and even on the east side of Brody Street, my kids are in the free basketball program at, on Mifflin Street, 12th and Mifflin. So there's programs out there. We just have to do a better job and get people involved. And I think Isaiah Thomas is also a strong advocate of out-of-school-time programming, right? And the majority of those programs are actually free, but we have to do a better job in getting that information into the hands of the people, and I think that's what we have to do as leaders to make sure people know about it. And I'm also going to take back to Parks and Rec, Ms. Randolph's idea, when I came in, she said, "How come we don't have our own skating ring?", right? And when I think about it, thinking outside the box, there's nothing that says we cannot as a Parks and Recreation Department create our own program, right, through public property where we actually have. where we actually have a skating rink. Nothing stops us from doing that, right? Because when children were skating all across buildings in the city of Philadelphia, someone said, "Let's give them a skate park." And there's a brand-new state-of-the-art skate park right across the street from the art museum on the School Car River Trail. So we can take the same idea, back to Parks and Rec and say, "Hey, wait a minute, somebody gave us an idea about maybe doing bowling that's operated by the city of Philadelphia, or maybe doing a skating rink that's operated by the city of Philadelphia." So thank you for challenging us to think outside the box. We don't have to keep doing things the same way over and over. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. President. And I just really wanted to thank you for your comments as well, because it really, a lot of the things you said really rang true for me. You know, I'm born and raised here in the city of Philadelphia, I'm a North Philly girl, you know, but we used to come, I was just thinking, we used to come down here to Southern, as we call it, on Saturday mornings. Now, I went to Parkway High School, my sister went to Grads, another relative, he went to Central, but on Saturday mornings, this was in the 80s, we would all be down here at South Philadelphia, and the place was packed. And so there were activities, there were classes, there were, you know, tons of us who were down here looking for something to do, something productive, something that was fun, something that was going to help us towards our future. And so, you know, whether it's activities like those or skating rinks, you know, when I grew up, I was, like I said, in North Philly, there was Carmen's skating rink.
Carmen's.
Carmen, remember Carmen's, right? And then, you know, or we would go out to Southwest, to Elmwood, or, you know, like all kinds of different places. There was, you know, roller skating, and there was bowling, and there were a lot, a lot, a lot of activities for us to do. So I just wanted to thank you really for bringing up that point, because, you know, we remember, like, it benefited all of us. And so now for this generation, what are we going to do? And I think the Council President put it very, very well. We can do better, we can do better. So thank you for bringing that to the forefront. Thank you.
And also, Councilmember Isaiah Thomas, he said, "No, we have our, we do run a skating rink." It must be uptown, like, that's, so I understand, you want one down in South Philly, that's uptown, they got ice skating.
Ice skating rink at Simon's Rec Center.
Okay. That's a middle neighborhood, that's Mount Airy, West Oak.
We definitely could work on roller skating and bowling through public property.
And also, Councilman Curtis Jones at Hattington, they also have a state-of-the-art outside skating rink. So I guess you challenged me and said, "Well, bring one down South Philly, this is your neighborhood." So the Chair recognizes Councilmember Mark Squiller. I do want to say one thing in regards to Washington Avenue. There was a major accident on Washington Avenue the other day. That wasn't the result of somebody driving, what happened, that was a result of an actual shooting with two young ladies inside a car and somebody tried to take them out, and the car crashed. It actually took the whole top of the car off. So that wasn't an actual typical accident that happened on the west side of Washington Avenue the other day. I did see it coming home from taking my sons to school in the morning, it was a very, very dramatic-looking incident that took place. The whole top of the car was off, so I called the 17th and found out what happened, and some guys had followed two young ladies home from an after-hours spot and started shooting up the car on Washington Avenue, and they wound up crashing, and I guess they must have been going so fast because the whole top of the car was completely off. Chair recognizes Councilmember Mark Squiller.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Ms. Randolph, for your questions. And you always love that people keep it real, and that's why I love South Philly. People in South Philly tell you what they think, whether they like you or not, and it's great. But also, I want to piggyback off two things. One is the activities and programming. Parks and Rec, the investment in programming is immense in this budget because the need of programming, it's not just, we have some centers that have good programming and other centers that don't. I think the key is to make sure every center, no matter what neighborhood it is, has programming available to the folks and the children, and even the adults, because whether it's teenagers, whether it's adults, it's others, they need things to do and places to go, and it's important to make sure that every center has those programs available. But also, there's resource centers. I know Kathy Gilmore Richardson, Councilmember Richardson, had enabled resource centers throughout the city of Philadelphia. There's four, there's going to be six. And that's for after-hours, like, places up till from 10:00 to 2:00 a.m. And for folks who have nothing to do and nowhere to go, and instead of going out, getting in trouble, or being out after curfew, these resource centers are available to folks by region. And it's something that we need to do a better job, like Council President said, of letting people know where they are. Those centers are not just for people who get caught with curfew and a parent can't pick them up and they send them there, but it's for places, they have music, they have gaming, they have music mixing, they have all different things that interest young teenagers who may go out and find out that there's nothing to do after 10, 11 o'clock at night. But let's get to Washington Avenue too, and I understand that we have people who are for and against the changes, we have two sides of that. We are actually doing a study to look at the changes, to really determine the benefits and the challenges to them. You know, the study has been initiated, it's only the first year, the second year we'll do a study. They have shown that there is some congestion in certain areas and some changes that may need to be made, but that's a point of being able to look at a change, being able to understand it. The goal is always public safety, right? What is the safest and most possible way to make a street safe, whether it's for pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists? And we want to make sure that everybody is safe on those roads. So we will continue to look at those things, and look at the studies, and see how it impacts not only Washington Avenue, but the adjacent corridors, right? The cars like Federal Street or Carpenter Street, Christian Street, and how that affects. So we will continue to look at that, and we will also continue to appreciate any input that you have, and feel free to shout out anytime and send us an email or a call. Thank you.
The Chair now recognizes Caleb Hope Meyer, please come on up. Caleb Hope Meyer.
Hello. Thank you, Council President and City Council for holding this meeting, I really appreciate the forum. I wanted to talk a minute for, about traffic safety in the city of Philadelphia. This is a pretty important issue, and I feel like more people care about it each and every year. Just a couple stats, 125 of our neighbors were killed on Philadelphia streets last year. Two of them were on scooters, 10 of them were on bikes, and over 50 of them were walking. This is, you know, this is tragic each and every time, and it's entirely preventable. These are, as I would like to say, crashes, not accidents, because accidents would imply that there's nothing that could have been done. Some would say enforcement maybe is a better way to go, maybe we need more police to, you know, catch the bad drivers, but that, you know, that only has an impact after the fact. If you can prevent bad driving to start with, that would make a huge difference, preventing speeding or people, cutting people off at corners, things like that. So, yeah, I'm a little disappointed in the funding going to these measures. Our Vision Zero budget, which is the program aimed at reducing these traffic fatalities to zero, is about, I think it's like a million, 1.5 million a year, which really isn't enough to tackle the scale of the issue. It's a little disappointing considering we're talking, spending two some, like, what is it, almost two and a half million on police drones and 200 new police vehicles. It just, I feel like that money could be better spent on improving our streets and making them safer. So what does this look like? It means daylighting of intersections, making them more open, making them more accessible, ramps for handicapped people, getting kids to get around, more bike lanes to give people an alternative to driving, which has shown that it will in fact make our traffic situations better and give people options that don't require them spending, you know, thousands a year on a motor vehicle if they don't need it. And it probably would help with parking as well. So I just want to express my concern for the lack of this in the budget, and hopefully we can do more to fund these measures. Like I said, maybe that could come from the police budget, I don't think spending all this money on vehicles will help. And one example is, one of our neighbors was killed on South Street a couple years ago by a police in an SUV. So I don't really see how more police SUVs makes us safer. I usually find them in crosswalks and sidewalks and not bike lanes, so I don't really feel the safety there. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Questions or comments from members of the committee? Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
Sorry, I feel like I'm monopolizing the conversation, but the issues that...
Can you just bring your microphone up, please?
I apologize, I feel like I'm monopolizing the conversation, but the issues that you're bringing up just happen to coincidentally be things that I've worked on. I'm gonna start though by giving Councilmember Mark Squiller a shout-out, because I'm pretty sure it was Councilmember Squiller who introduced legislation to be able to put cameras on SEPTA bus, to be able to address some of the concerns that you communicated around people double parking, issues as it relates to cyclists, pedestrian safety and things of that capacity. So I'll start with that legislation, because he has one of the more active districts that advocate for some of the things that you're essentially communicating right now, and I think that's an important bill that puts us in a position to be able to assess how bad this problem really is, because we know it's bad, but how bad? Ironically enough, today in City Council, we talked about this exact issue. And one of the things that we pushed back on, on the council side, was that about two and a half years ago, 12% of the roads produced over 75% of the car accidents. Well, in City Council today, 12% of the roads are the intersections where 50% of the fatalities that you just talked about took place. So our concern was, why is that number not down to 11%, 10%, 9%? Why are we not seeing progress over the next couple, over the last couple of years? And what was communicated to us was that the problems are shifting. So we have seen some progress as it relates to certain roads in certain areas in the city of Philadelphia that were a part of the high-injury network, that's no longer a part of the network, because we've seen some investment in infrastructure that are actually the exact same examples that you just said right there. The problem we have is that as we address problems, let's say on Cobb's Creek, we now see those problems shift to other roads and to other lanes in the city of Philadelphia. So it's important that your advocacy continues, because we identify these intersections based on what constituents tell us, but it's also important that you're active in the next phase of this initiative. So we agree with investing in infrastructure, we're fighting for that right now, but we also have new technology coming. Harrisburg has put us in a position where we can now add cameras to five roads across the city of Philadelphia, similar to what was done with Roosevelt Boulevard. The cameras on Roosevelt Boulevard has made Roosevelt Boulevard a completely different place, because at one point Roosevelt Boulevard was the most dangerous street in the entire country. That is no longer the case. So it's important that we hear from the community over the next couple of months, so we can identify five more roads that Harrisburg has given us the power to essentially add new technology to those roads to hopefully address some of the traffic issues that you talked about and put us in a position to be a little closer to our goal of having zero fatalities as it relates to traffic-related incidents. I hope that answers some of the stuff you talked about, but more importantly, thank you for your advocacy, and please keep up that advocacy, because your advocacy informs us as it relates to issues that exist, traffic-related in the community. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Mark Squiller.
Thank you, Council President. Also, when we introduced the legislation for Vision Zero, we, you know, looked at studies throughout municipalities, and we looked at challenges when you make changes. And then sometimes, and we said this at some other meetings, sometimes when you do make changes, initially there is an increase of accidents or incidents at those locations because people aren't used to those changes. And sometimes it takes a little bit of time to work through those changes before you do see the safety of those changes that really come into play. You know, and as we do, and as we make changes, we as a city need to be able to address those changes and look at them, to be able to study them, to make sure they're doing what the intention is. And if it's not, maybe to go back to those locations and reconsider what else can be done. So it's something that we will continue to do in the future, working with OTIS, the Office of Infrastructure, Transportation, and Sustainability, to make sure that we could continue not only increasing the safety of the streets through speed bumps, but look at what other things we could do as a city to make sure the roads are safe for all users, right? For the pedestrians, for the motorists, and for the bicyclists. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from members of the committee? The Chair recognize, next person I'm going to call up is Kay Lee.
Good evening, Councilmembers.
Good evening.
My question has to do with grants and the grant funding process, and it is, if you have a comprehensive proposal, what you believe, Kay, to increase student engagement and involvement, promote creativity, reduce boredom, violence and bullying in the schools, how do you tap into the grant funding process, especially when you see the same programs you're seeing in these grants, but your proposal is always shot down with no explanation, no rhyme, or no reason? And I would direct it to one person in particular, but I just want to hear if anyone has anything to comment on that.
Sure. So it depends on the type of grant that you're applying for. I know as district council members, we have something called the Philadelphia Activities Fund, and so your district council person have a certain amount of funding that they can actually provide. And then also, if it's violence prevention related, we have the Office of Violence Prevention where individuals can apply for a community expansion grant, and that grant focuses on supporting organizations that are addressing gun violence on a grassroots level. Those are the two main ones that I know we deal with in terms of community-based organizations, but there's also other programs out there. If you're talking about supporting a small business, you have PIDC, Philadelphia Industrial Development Corporation, you also have the Department of Commerce as well. And so it depends on the type of programming that you're looking for, but if it's community-based organizing, the Office of Violence Prevention, as well as your district council person has Philadelphia Activity Fund grants. Any other member would like to address comments?
Councilmember Squiller here. The DA also has a grant program for public safety and for violence prevention, but as the grants, certain grants have certain criterias that you have to meet, and then there's a person who goes through those criterias to see if you're eligible for those grants. Not sure why, if you were denied a grant or not, but also some have, I think, strict limitations by zip code and other things that may have played a role in how the grant was distributed.
I'll tell you what I am willing to do, is if you are going after a particular grant, and we could have a sidebar conversation with my staff, at least walk you through the process, depending on what you're applying for, and at least advocate to make sure you get a fair shot. We don't make the final decisions. And my staff member would, Kareem right here, will grab your information and then we'll do a follow-up with you, all right? Thank you, Ms. Kay Lee. Next we have up is Dr. Chinchilla Jonezian. The Neighborhood CNN, MSNBC.
All right, greetings to all Councilmembers, Councilmen, President Johnson, good evening. Wow, this budget proposal is pretty interesting. I want to address a couple of things. First of all, with the public safety. Public safety, to me, it needs to be more than what's here. There's so much violence in the streets, so when we talk about public safety, the first thing I think about is the safety of the young people. And so, more active organizations out there, because I know a lot of money has gone into the city for gun violence prevention and all of that. However, there is not enough active organizations out there really doing the work. We see them getting money, but we don't see any work. There are some that are doing a great job, but we need to see more boots on the ground, feet in the street type of organizations that's going to actively engage with the young people and not be afraid to go and interact with them and to bring programs to them, to mentor them, take them under their wing. And a lot of people are afraid to do that, but that's what we need. We also need to see men in their communities out in the streets, and there are some people that's trying to do that, but if the city would begin to look at these groups that are grassroots groups, that are just small groups of people doing the work out there actively every day, but yet they don't have funding. And they don't have funding, they're doing it all on their own, out of pocket, because they're doing it from the heart. But if the city would begin to provide some money for these people, they can then recruit other people to come on board, because everybody don't want to volunteer, okay? So they want to get paid for their services. So that's something that the city, I think, should look at that would be instrumental. So that's something that the city, uh, I think should look at, that would be instrumental in helping to decrease the violence on the streets with our young people. Also, the, uh, education, wow. The removal of asbestos from all schools in the city, because, uh, that was supposed to have been done years ago, but last year and the year before, here comes asbestos again, and schools had to be shut down. So if it's done properly, and not just, you know, covering it up, but actually removing the asbestos, because it causes health problems within our children, and those health problems then affects their learning. So that needs to really be addressed, and as the teacher said, air conditioning in all schools is definitely needed, so that way when the summertime comes and it's hot, there's no need to close schools early, because they have that air conditioning. So every second that a child misses in school, it's depriving them of their education. So we definitely need to do better there. Also, in education, I think about after-school activities and programs that I had coming up as a child. I'll be 61 this year. When I was a child, our educational system was excellent. We had music programs. I learned how to play the viola, starting in the fourth grade. My brother learned to play the drums, so if we bring back those music programs into our schools, it will engage the children tremendously, because it will keep their minds focused. Also, music enhances the brain, and so to learn to play an instrument, it's like really utilizing so much of the brain that does not get used. So to bring back those programs would be ideal, because we need them. Also vocational schools, most of the vocational schools here have been shut down. So to learn a trade in school is very important, especially for the guys, to learn HVAC and all this other stuff, woodshop and things like that, that's no longer available. Those things need to happen. Also, language, learning how to speak French and Spanish and other languages, starting in elementary school is ideal, like out in Delaware County, other places, they have these programs, and then their children, they're like really excelling, because they have so many things that the children here are deprived of. So that's something that really needs to be looked into. Um, now with the clean and green, I have a couple of things to say about that. Um, I think an ideal thing to enhance the clean and green program is to have trashcans on every corner throughout the city, so that people walking down the street eating their popcorn or whatever, they throw trash right down on the ground. And it's like animalistic to me to just throw stuff on the ground. So if a trashcan is on every corner, maybe then they'll see that trashcan and say, oh, I'll put it in the trashcan. We're standing at the bus stop, people standing there, they eat and drop trash. The trashcan is there to throw the trash in the trashcan. Now with the street cleaning, that I think it started up again, um, I don't really understand the purpose of those trucks going through the streets, because last year when they did it, and you come out and you still see stuff on the street. So I don't know what the purpose of it is, and the cars are being ticketed for not moving their vehicles during that window of 11 to 1, or whatever it may be, and I think that's unfair too, so that needs to be looked at, because there's so many disabled people that can't get up and move their cars, because they have someone else that comes and drives them to wherever they need to go, but yet their cars park there. Then you have people that work overnight, and at their time, they're asleep. And then the issue with parking, people try to go and move their car elsewhere, but there's nowhere for them to move their car to. So I don't think that's fair, that people are constantly getting these tickets left and right, especially for our senior citizens and our handicapped people. Housing investments, the thing I don't see on there is affordable housing. I see a turnkey program and other things like that, but there should be more affordable housing for hardworking people that are struggling, and they have kids, they're, you know, have to pay for their groceries, and their, uh, rents are high, and even mortgages. So something like that would be ideal as well, for you all to look into that. So those are the issues I have, and for it to be more programs available to children in every community. I know you mentioned Bear, and that's great that Bear is being rebuilt and done, but what about kids that don't live right around in that area? So I think it would be ideal for there to be some type of, uh, safe haven for kids, like maybe every three to five blocks, so that kids in those areas can walk to that particular location and feel safe, and have something to do, programs. And, you know, my organization, we have tons of people that would love to, uh, help do things like that, and we do music programs, and we do all kinds of things to engage children. So my heart is with the young people, and I want to see that, and as the teacher said once again, what I was gonna talk about, um, how education had started, that where it all begins, with education, and, you know, the school-to-prison pipeline, children not getting a good education, they're not going to school. Bring back detrimency officers like they had when I was a kid. If they saw a child walking around, and not in school, those officers would pick them up off the street, and then the parent is contacted and have to take care of that, and then they get a citation. Start doing things like that, but again, some kids are afraid to go to school, so we have to make our schools safe, um, install those security things like that's out there in all the schools, so that when kids go in, the ones that have knives and guns, they can't bring them into school, it'll be confiscated, you know? So things like that will begin to make children feel safe again, it'll make the parents feel safe, and, you know, not so much concerned about what's gonna happen in the school, because there's too much violence within the school as well. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Chair recognizes, Councilmember Anthony Phillips.
I just want to briefly say thank you so much. Our, just so you know, our mayor has proposed 30,000 units for housing. Uh, they're gonna be doing over, over, over her term, I think the end of her term, uh, that's the plan. Uh, in addition to that, uh, we, I'm the chair of Parks and Rec, um, and one of the things that we're focused on is making sure that all of the programs that Parks and Rec has within their facilities, and particularly the rec centers, are really, are really promoted, uh, to the public. In addition to that, so that hours are even, are equal as well across the Parks and Rec centers, but we also want to do a better job with making sure that there's equity in programming across every rec center in the city of Philadelphia, whereas some rec centers have gaming, which is something that Councilman Thomas has talked about, but some rec centers don't have video games, right? So how do we do a better job at, uh, giving more spaces equity when it comes to programming? So you're right about that. And I also just want to mention that, you know, for the schools, our mayor has proposed more vocational programming, um, in the schools, year-round schools, so, uh, this budget is going to reflect that, but it's also gonna be a five-year budget that's gonna reflect the vocation, uh, vocational work with our, with our schools as well. So just want to say thank you for your comments, but yeah, more work to, more work to do, and we're looking forward to doing that. Thank you.
You're welcome. And also regarding trashcans, I know there's a significant investment in, on them big bellies, they're gonna be distributed all across the city of Philadelphia, with maintenance as well, because sometime they fill a big belly up and they just leave it there, but they also have significant investment on making sure that there, there's additional, um, maintenance of those big bellies. The Chair recognizes, Councilmember Nicole Rort.
Thank you for your testimony. Just want to affirm many of which, many of the things that you already said, Councilman Phillips did the same, um, certainly for the vocational training in the schools, uh, the trades, I think, are gonna be doing a, a big thing with that. Um, and also we do want to affirm the fact that trashcans, not every single corner, but I do think there will be more for sure, and I think we'll see a major change on that. Also want to affirm that I think it's, it's deeply unfair, um, to, to expect, um, to continue to do all this building that we're doing, not create any parking, and then ticket everybody for not having a place to actually go. I also agree on that. I'm not sure what can be done about it, but I just want to affirm that point. But I did want to ask you specifically, you named, um, a frustration that you have about pro, uh, organizations, um, that are getting funding but are not necessarily boots on the ground, or, or anything like that. Can you name two or three organizations that you think, that you would reference, that you would point to, that kind of fit the bill of what it is that you're specifically looking for?
Well, one that's been funded numerous of years.
No, 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 two or three organizations that you would prefer be funded, like that would, like, boots on the ground?
That I would prefer.
The ones that you described, yes.
That I want to be funded.
Yes, something, do you, do you know offhand, two or three?
Oh, yeah, uh, Be A Voice, Right the Wrong Coalition, uh, those are organizations that, uh, I actually founded, um, and, um, the other, um, oh shucks, I can't think of, there's a couple of others that I work with, um, that I have seen them actually do the work, because I've gone out there with them, um...
You know their names?
Uh, one is Philly Truce. And the other one, oh gosh, um, I think it's Village Hustle, Village Movement.
Village Movement?
Yeah.
Thank you very, very much.
You're welcome.
It's important for us to know those, so as, you know, as we can meet folks, there are a number of organizations in this city, a lot of nonprofits, things like that, so it's good to know the ones that you may never affirm.
Yeah, see, here's the thing, though, they're all not nonprofits, so some, they don't have a 501(c)(3), okay? So they're out there just, uh, community activists and organizations that are coming together, doing the work, so, yeah. Thank you.
Councilmember Cindy Bass?
I, I just wanted to say, Dr. Chinchilla, I've known for a while now, and, uh, when it comes to grassroots advocacy, she's the real deal. Uh, we see you out in the street, in these streets, as they say, um, you know, just really being active with these organizations and, uh, trying to make a difference. So I just really wanted to acknowledge your work in the community, and that you've been out here, you're not new at this, you know, this is not your first rodeo, you've been out here for a long time, trying to make a difference in the community, so I just wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you.
And also, she's a social justice advocate as well, for those who are formerly incarcerated, so I, I concur and I echo the sentiments of Councilmember, um, Cindy Bass. And I think that will be the final participant.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I am a BOK student also.
Oh, okay.
65. I wanted to just say to everyone, um, Mayor Park is a budget. I really like it with the children, educating the children. Uh, we are, my husband and I are leaders of a community outreach organization. We have been mentoring children since 2009. We reach out to them, we teach them how to handle their problems in a nonviolent way. We're now introducing them to the cursive handwriting that some of them don't know anything about.
Thank you.
Okay? They don't know anything about that, and it's just surprising. They look at the letters and they want to know, what's this? Because there's an uppercase, lowercase. But also want to just say that the health spending, the clinic spending, all of that, uh, is, is worth to have. And also for our children, we take them bowling, and they go roller skating. Lunch and all is free. I just also want to say to our councilmen here, thank you, we applied for the PAF, and I think that grant has really taken us a long way and supported us, and we are gonna continue and pray that we continue to get it. I see on this list, there's public safety, and my concern is, because our son we lost with this nonviolent gun violence going on, and we pray for all the families that went through it. I wanted to know if we can have some detectors in the subways? Detectors, gun detectors in the subways. Something that would detect a weapon, that someone is on the bus, and the, uh, you know, in the, uh, I mean, we need it everywhere, we need it in stores, and we need it everywhere, we need it in schools, but we need some type of gun detectors in places where, we're not gonna catch them all, but we can catch some that have guns on them as they walk in these buildings. It is so scary, uh, just to go out. People are telling me they don't even want to go out anymore. They don't even want to, of course they are sitting on the step. And my husband and I are block captains, and thank God we in the neighborhood where they keep it clean, and so far, nothing's going on, that's bad. But we want to just reach out to our senators and, and councilmen, and ask them to please try to get some detectors, gun detectors, in these subways and buses. Maybe the budget, we can expand it years later to put it where we, in stores. Uh, it's, it's just frightening, supermarkets, anywhere, and even in the parking lots and the gas stations, it's just frightening out here. I want to thank our Councilman Isaiah, he just went, uh, left out of here, but, uh, we invited him to one of our back-to-school events last year, and we're gonna have another one, Councilman, President Councilman this year. And we just thank everyone, uh, we hope, we're gonna invite you all, so we hope to see you all there. If not, keep us in prayer, because we want to have it outside, okay? And you know what goes on, and we just heard about something today, and I thank God my granddaughter didn't make it there today, uh, which was out in West Philadelphia, and she was on her way there, they was having their prayer. So I just want to say that, um, thank you for giving me this chance to speak, and I appreciate all of you. I don't know everybody's by their names, but faces, yes, and I appreciate you, and just thank you very much for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Grant, and we thank you for your hard work, your dedication. The Chair recognizes, Councilmember Jay Young, for response.
Thank you so much for your comment regarding, um, you know, SEPTA and their, and their gun detectors. SEPTA actually just, um...
Bring your microphone up.
Sorry. SEPTA just actually, um, ended a pilot program where they actually had the technology to, to spot guns on the train. They ended that program because they didn't have the right, um, systems in place to actually fully monitor it, right? So there was something that they had, it was a year-long pilot, um, but unfortunately, because SEPTA's technology infrastructure wasn't up to date with the software, um, they had to end that program. Uh, so it is something that SEPTA will probably continue to explore, um, and I'm the, the vice chair of the Transportation and Public Utilities Committee on Council, so that's something I'm gonna be looking into as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Nina Ma.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, Ms. Grant, I was so happy to hear you're teaching children cursive writing. Um, I'll just tell you, you know, it opens up networks in your brain when you're doing different things, and, uh, for our children to experience all different ways to use their faculties is so important. Um, I know people think that we don't need cursive writing, but it's not the sake of cursive writing, it's the process of the writing that is doing something for us when we take a pencil in our hand and do that. So thank you for doing that, I just want to commend you to have that in your program. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm trying to understand, I don't even, in fact, it's, it's unconscionable to me that they don't teach cursive in school. Like, did I miss something? Did they say no need to teach them? Because you still gotta do a signature, right? So I don't understand where we went left at with our school, sit again? Oh, because they're texting. Oh, no, we gotta hold them accountable, y'all, like, maybe do a movement to make sure the district bring back cursive writing, because the other part I don't understand is, at some point in time, they took gym out of school. I remember going to school with the tube socks come all the way up here, the girls had the blue gym suits on, we had to do all types of exercises, I don't know what they do these days, it's like, you get a pass, and you wonder why. But anyway, uh, this is why it's good to be out in the community, right? So we can hear from you directly, uh, we are documenting the questions, the comments, and the concerns that were asked, and as a unit, as a body of council, we're just not here just for the sake of being here. We will follow up on everything that was said today, as we evaluate this budget as we move forward. And so, we want to thank everyone for coming out. A lot of these members are district members, so technically, they could said, you know what? I don't represent South Philly, I choose not to be a part of this this evening, I'm gonna go at home, because most of you may not know, we started budget hearings today at 10:00. We ended about 5:00, and then we came here, and so I thank all the members for taking time out of your schedule and being here, because this is very, very important, to hear from you, to listen to your issues, to listen to your concerns. I want to thank Public Property for also coming out, our new acting commissioner, we thank you also for showing up from South Philly. Thank you for showing up and participating as well, and to all the staff. And with that being said, um, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.